Good evening, everyone. If we could all rise up again for the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Johnson will lead us.
Please face the flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, Mr. W.
This is Councilmember Dash.
Present, sir.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Lauer.
Present.
Mayor pro Tim Crosby.
Here.
Mayor Hepburn.
Present. We have a presentation tonight. Safer from Wildfires presentation by Arminé Sargassan.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for allowing the Department of Insurance to make a presentation tonight. I know it's raining outside, but I'm here to talk about wildfires and what the department has done in the last year particularly to save lives and make insurance available and affordable. Next slide, please. So for those of you that don't know what the Department of Insurance does, we actually are the largest consumer protection agency in the state of California. And we make sure that insurance companies do not overcharge for insurance, that rates are not discriminatory. We also solve issues when it comes to insurance fraud or abuse. We investigate fraud and abuse. And we assist consumers when it comes to any issue that they might be experiencing. What we cannot do as a department is we cannot mandate that an insurance company sell insurance to a particular person or a community. Next slide, please. So in the last three to four years, the Department of Insurance has prioritized meeting with consumers all over the state. We actually went to all 50 counties. We met with wildfire survivors because we kept hearing that insurance was becoming unavailable and unaffordable right after a natural disaster, especially when it came to wildfires. And as you may know, the last 10 years, the state of California has experienced some of the most devastating wildfires in our history. And also wildfires are no longer just this northern Californian issue. It is affecting everyone in the state. So next slide, please. From those conversations with wildfire survivors, we were able to work with the state legislature to enact some change. We were able to remove certain barriers that wildfire survivors were facing when it came to receiving the insurance benefits that they feed into. We were also able to expand coverage for living expenses and work again with the legislature to provide extended coverage for upgraded building costs. Another legislation that actually Commissioner Lara authored when he was still a state senator went into effect in 2019 that currently provides a one-year moratorium from non-renewals when it comes to a governor declared wildfire emergency. So at least know that if you experience a wildfire emergency, you at least have a year of coverage that your insurance cannot non-renew because of that. Additionally, we were able to increase the non-renewal notice an insurance company is mandated to give you from 45 days to 75 days, giving an additional month for policyholders to find an alternative policy. Next slide, please. Also, you may have heard of the Fair Plan. It is the insurer of last resort. Essentially, it's a pool of all insurance companies that are licensed to operate in California. They share the burden of insuring those who live in those very high fire severity zones. It is not a state agency. It is not funded by public funds. So we've been able to also enact some changes to the Fair Plan, improving it. We were able to increase some of the coverage limits that had not been increased in decades. We also mandated that the Fair Plan cover wineries and agricultural businesses. And also this year, working with the legislature, we mandated that the Fair Plan provide comprehensive coverage along with the limited coverage that it currently provides. Unfortunately, the Fair Plan decided to sue the state of California. But we're currently working to make sure that this is an option that works for everyone. Next slide, please. I wanted to give you, I know this is not the greatest map, but I wanted to give you a map so that you have visual of those areas in Laverne that are mostly impacted by wildfires. And this is from the CALFIRE's website. So as you can see, obviously, most of northern Laverne is in the very high fire severity zone. So next slide, please. So this brings me to what I wanted to share with you tonight, which is a framework that the Department of Insurance has been working on along with other state agencies to give actionable steps to policyholders on what they can do to protect their lives, their homes, their businesses by taking steps to harden their communities and in effect make insurance available and affordable. So we call this framework Safer from Wildfires. And next slide, please. I'm going to go over the next three slides rather quickly. And it might be a little difficult to read every line, but please note that the whole framework is available on our website, insurance.ca.gov. Essentially, where everything that we're recommending is in one, two, three steps. And it aligns with what the state emergency response and readiness agencies have been advocating for. First of all, it is to protect your immediate structure, which means making sure that you have upgraded. Class A roof, your walls, your vents, your windows are all upgraded to be fire safe. Then the second step, next slide, please, is to protect your immediate surroundings. So making sure that you clear any dead vegetation, any debris from under the decks, removing any combustible sheds and outer buildings. And then the last step, next slide, please, is working together as a community. That does involve groups such as Firewise, where neighbors come together and decide on an evacuation plan on various issues that will essentially clear any dead vegetation from your community and working together also with your local jurisdictions, your local fire department. So next slide, please. With these recommendations also come the regulations that will lower the cost of insurance and increase transparency. And we actually held, once these regulations were announced in February, we actually held a public hearing where we took comments from the public as well as the industry. So the department actually spent the last few months going through every single public comment. We were able to finalize the regulations and finally got the approval from the Office of Administrative Law on October 14th. So as of October 14th, Safer from Wildfires and these regulations are law, which means that now insurance companies, starting next year, will be required to factor in consumers and businesses wildfire safety actions into their pricing. They will, starting next year, we're, I know it says January there, but right now the date most likely is April or May. The insurance companies already give you a wildfire risk score for your property, but it's not public. So starting next year, you should receive your wildfire risk score from the insurance company and see the reasons that went into it, why, let's say, your wildfire risk score is so high. And the department will have oversight over that score. And if you do not agree with it or you've done the work to actually harden your property, then you should be able to appeal that risk determination and in effect be given a discount. And the discount really varies from policy to policy. It really depends on how you pay for your insurance, but it could be anywhere from 5% to 20%. Next slide, please. I mentioned the non-renewals were very high. The latest data that we have on non-renewals is from 2020, and it shows that they're down by 10%. So we know what we're doing as a department is working. And also currently 19 insurance companies that comprise 40% of the insurance market already provide discounts for home partnering actions. But once these regulations are fully implemented, 100% of the insurance market will get discounts. Last slide, please. Wanted to leave you with our phone number. So this 1-800-927-4357 number is to our consumer hotline. It is actually answered by insurance experts Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So if anyone ever has a question, a concern, you don't understand your policy, you have a complaint, you suspect fraud, you want to file a complaint, that's the number to dial. We actually answer the phones and we speak multiple languages. Or you could also visit us at insurance.ca.gov and take the same actions on our website. With that, I thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, we have any questions?
Yeah. For the Fair Plan, will they be offering an HO3 policy?
Could you expand on HO3 policy?
Homeowners.
Homeowners. They currently provide homeowners' policies. However, it's limited coverage. So if you want to add other coverages, let's say flood or earthquake, they don't provide all of it or for your belongings to be protected. So everything is add-on, but the department is trying to have them provide comprehensive coverage.
Liability has been an issue of getting that coverage for some of my customers. I'm just wondering if that's going to be a part of what they will be offering.
So that's really a plan for us to be able to have them provide liability, comprehensive coverage that actually works because we do hear a lot of stories about how the Fair Plan is not really helping.
Right. They don't cover theft. They don't cover liability.
Right.
And it's hard to get standalone policy. Ned, I know we have some issues with fire hazards in the north area of Laverne. We have a wilderness area experiencing those types of issues. And we're having trouble with fish and game apparently and clearing some of that brush area. Can you give us some help with that?
If you give our hotline a call, I'm sure they'll be able to definitely.
We got you right there. Councilmember Johnson, that was a shot over the bow. I was gonna ask for money, but hey. Well, what Councilmember Johnson had stated, we have a number of people in North Laverne, which is the red zone, which is on the plan, that are getting canceled. And not even a notification, just like, you're canceled. And so this is going to help us tremendously. We'll put this on our website as far as, and I talked to some that they were given a criteria to repair or to remove things away from the house, any type of cypress or any of that stuff on this particular individual. And they had to or else, and they came out and inspected again apparently. But we have a real problem in North Laverne because we are so encroached upon a hillside. And like Councilmember Johnson stated, we have a wilderness area, but we also are butted against the forest up there. And it's an interesting one as far as artificial wildlife and fuel modification. It's a real, it's a real issue. He was right. It's a very big issue.
Yeah. I mean, if we're prevented from clearing and getting defensible space, it puts a, puts a real burden on those homeowners because of the proximity to the brush area.
Absolutely. And if I may, if you have ideas on how to improve because you obviously speak with your constituents directly, if there are any ideas that you can bring to the Department of Insurance to enhance and expand insurance, please don't hesitate to reach out.
So actually, this isn't going to come into effect until maybe April or May.
April, May, so as I mentioned.
Said January, but we know how that works.
October, we finally received the final approval from the Office of Administrative Law. Now insurance companies have 180 days to respond. So that puts us in April where they essentially give us a plan on how they're going to implement these new regulations.
How does that do with our residents now that are being canceled? How can we?
Well, in terms of cancellations.
Can they just call? They can call you and say, hey, we're having an issue and you guys can look into that?
Absolutely. But in terms of cancellations, insurance companies have to give a 75-day notice. They can't just cancel without a notice. And if a consumer is experiencing that, please have them call the Department of Insurance. We will definitely investigate that. Also, if someone's experiencing an issue finding an alternative policy, on our website, we actually have a tool. It's called Home Insurance Finder. And if you just plug in your zip code and specifically check mark that you're looking for insurance in a high fire area, it will bring you all those insurance companies that are writing insurance in your area. Some people don't know that maybe your market is saturated, but there might be an agent or broker, let's say in New Orleans, California, who's writing insurance in your area. So that list on our website will bring you maybe contacts elsewhere in California that might be covering you. So, but we as a department are also happy to look into it and assist your constituents with finding a different policy.
That's great.
Sorry. Are you guys have any other outreach programs you'd be able to come out here and talk to some people? Because I know not everybody has a, able to access some of the stuff that's online. I know the 1-800 number is great, but you know, I.
Absolutely.
Catch up on the wrong day. You can be waiting for a couple hours to get somebody from insurance. So do you guys have any other outreach programs coming up here in Laverne that we can do?
So I'm your liaison to the city of Laverne for the Department of Insurance. So anytime you have a specific program that you'd like us to discuss, or even if it's the same presentation, maybe I can give you an update sometime in the spring of next year. I'll be more than happy to come out here.
Or maybe you can come out to one of our events and have a booth?
That would be wonderful.
That would be great.
Any opportunity where we can share more information, I'll be happy to. Because as you may know, many people don't know who we are as a department, so we're trying to change that.
But as of right now, we can go ahead and we're gonna, I would like to post this on our website. And then we can also push this a bit, especially for insurance and stuff, correct?
Yeah. We got the presentation already up.
It's already up. Great. And we'll let people know what it's about. That way they can call you every hour of the day. Thank you. I mean, I appreciate it very much. Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We will move to, and there.
I think Robert was gonna also talk about.
I didn't know. Robert, come on out.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor of the District of Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. I'm very disappointed about that. So in light of this information that we just heard, we thought it would be a great opportunity for us to reiterate some of the measures that we currently have in place to reduce our vulnerability in our community, of course, with regards to wildfires. And when it comes to wildfire hazard mitigation, we approach this in two different fronts. First is undeveloped parcels and developed parcels, of course. In the undeveloped parcel, this is the area that is governed by Government Code Section, I should, Public Resource Code 4291, that governs the open spaces and undeveloped land. And in this area, the city has a standing contract with the LA County to conduct these inspections of these properties. Because often times, these properties are owned by owners who are absentee or are out of the area. So it takes a long process to contact these owners and get them to comply. And it makes sense to go through the county and have them take care of these parcels for us because it is a long, arduous process to notify them and of course to conduct the abatements and so forth. And county has a perfect process in place already. And they also have the proper resources to actually go out and conduct these abatements. So with that in mind, it makes perfect sense for us to continue that relationship with the county and to have that success in abating those hazards in those areas. Now with developed parcels, there's also two areas that we approach these parcels. One is new construction. And in new construction, this area is governed by California Code of Regulations Title 24, which is our building standards. And part of that, of course, is the Fire Code as previous state variety. And Chapter 7A, the California Building Code, since at least 2016, has been mandated throughout the state of California, which we here in, the city of Laverne, also require when it comes to new construction. And basically, Chapter 7A stipulates and requires a certain type of construction standards, in particular in regards to exterior siding and requiring more fire-resistant materials and also installation of dual-pane windows and other requirements such as boxed eaves and so forth. And of course, these construction materials also have to be listed with the California State Fire Marshals as being a valid, I've gone through a rigorous process to be effective in these areas of construction. And also with regards to new construction, we also address this in fuel modification as well. So when a new structure, new construction does take place in these areas, we do require a separate supplemental for process and review by the fire department for their vegetation in these parcels. It's important that we catch those vegetation upfront to ensure that there needs a certain specific criteria. And these criteria requires these plants to be, or vegetation to be more drought following, fire resistant, and also the placement of vegetation is very important. So when these plans are submitted, we carefully review those plants to ensure compliance with all those. We also follow up with inspection to ensure that these vegetations that are planted for these new constructions are placed correctly and to ensure that they comply. So when they do mature, they don't pose that hazard to the new construction. So as far as new construction, how do we handle it? And with regards to existing construction, this area is governed by the Title 5 of the California Government Code. And this is where we get the defensible space requirements. And of course, defensible space requirements, we do, we are proactive and reactive in that area as well. So in very high fire hazard severity zone that you saw on the map, and those maps are pretty much outdated. And we're waiting for the new maps to be released by CALFIRE at any minute. Let's say it's going to be next month or two, however long it is. But we expect it shorter. And we expect those maps to be modified somewhat to either reduce or add additional areas in our city. So I wish I had the foresight of knowing what they're planning on doing with our area. But they're going to use the latest science, latest techniques of assessing to see what areas are actually deemed very high fire hazard severity zone. And for defensible space, going back to defensible space, we have recognized 130 parcels in our immediate very high fire hazard severity zones. And these 130 parcels are subject to the Government Code Section 511A2 that governs the defensible space. So they are subject to annual inspections and follow-up inspections. And of course, any enforcement of clearance if necessary. And then we also go further above and beyond the defensible space requirements when it comes to inspections. We also utilize parts of the California Fire Code to ensure access to water and identification of properties and so forth. So this comprehensive proportion that we have regarding defensible space serves us well, goes above and beyond the standards that CALFIRE has set for us. And also with regarding to existing structures, we also do our compliance with AB 38. This is when a parcel or property is up for sale within a very high fire hazard severity zone, the seller is required to disclose that parcel is within a high fire severity zone and are required to obtain an inspection by the fire department. And we actually go out and conduct those inspections, meet with the owners or the agents, and provide them a written report of the condition of the property. Now, the AB 38 doesn't mandate the owners to actually abate the hazards just to disclose that information to the potential buyer, to the buyer in this case. So we also conduct those inspections and give written reports as well. And when it comes to community outreach, of course, we utilize our social media to push any notification, especially during high fire times, during heat, summer seasons. And we also utilize our department website to promote safety tips and report any hazards that they might deem to be out there for us to respond to and take care of. And also, I think we'll also be promoting the Firewise Community Program, as a previous speaker I mentioned. And this is a program that was developed and managed by NFTA. So I will be working on that, developing that, and further pull on it on our website as well. And I'm here for any other questions, any questions which may happen.
You're not going to test us on that?
No, no.
That was a lot of information. I appreciate that, Mr. Montgomery. I really appreciate the fact that you're here now as a fire marshal. I know that in our area, but in northern Laverne, because of the high fire zone, plus the golf course, we have the issues with the trees. I've seen you multiple times there. But I must remind everybody, it's not just North Laverne. It's all of Laverne. And that means if there's a fire situation in a house where you have large amounts of debris and things around your house, that's dangerous to the other homes and also businesses. I know that you've been in businesses too. I was at one of the businesses and he said, you know, he says the fire marshal came by. And he brought some trainees with him. And he said, they sent me the report within like an hour of them being there. But he said there was no bill attached. But he said my neighbor got the report and a bill. And he said, the bill was a month later. I says, well, I'll talk to the fire chief about that. But no, this is really important. And you know what? He wasn't complaining. He did not complain about the bill. He wasn't complaining. Oh, he says, I really appreciate it. They're coming in and checking our businesses. Because if those rogue businesses that are attached, if one goes, you can lose everything. And the same for homes. I mean, we have to be very cognizant of the fact that you can't have debris all over your yard. And I think it's really good that we've got eyes and ears out there in the community to watch. Because there are some, there are some. I've seen a lot of Laverne over the last seven years. And there are some that require some special attention. But we do appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Fire Marshal Montgomery?
I'll get by. That was great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Announcements. Anybody have any announcements or upcoming events they'd like to, I think we have one from Yvonne Gaijos. I'm the spoke champ. You're welcome to talk next. You have 16 items you want to talk about? It looks like yours.
Yes, I do. 16. There's 10 councilmembers that have been residents. My name is Yvonne Gaijos. I am here on behalf of Sherri Best, President of the Laverne Historical Society, with several announcements of upcoming events that the Historical Society is going to make. This Saturday, the Historical Society is hosting a visit to the Old Mill, a structure in San Marino that was a functioning grist mill during the time of the Tengubon mission. LVHS will have a Joseph Led Tour at the Old Mill, followed by a presentation about the history of the Tengubon mission. If you want to join, residents can play with that at lunch to enjoy during the presentation. Flyers are available. And as of a couple days ago, there were still 10 openings left. There's no charge for the event. And we're rearranging from carpool. If you don't feel like driving up to San Marino, just give Sherri Best the easy mail. And I put flyers on the table over there. We're holiday candy. So if anybody wants to pick them up, go ahead and please do so for more information. That's Saturday. This coming Saturday at 11:00 a.m., the Tour to the Old Mill. Second, the LVHS is participating in the Creasy Laverne Car Show on the 19th of November. The 1938 International Truck will be there anytime from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. So stop by and take a look at the project director with any questions that you have. Also, go there to encourage our community of high school students who have been working on the restoration as well be there as well. This is a great way to support the community and our high school students. There is a save the date. It's only number three.
Good. Go ahead.
We have a save the date on December 10th. The Historical Society will host its annual vintage sale. And that's going to be from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. It's going to be held on Third Street. There are going to be three houses on Third Street that will be available for touring. And the LVHS will be selling vintage items, baked goods, jelly, foots, and other treats and treasures. Between 3:00 and 4:00 p.m. that day, the University of Laverne Coral Beach will be in holiday shopping. They'll also be backed up with business level, so that's pretty cool, too. And all the sales for the, all the sales that they make on during that day will go towards helping to restore the International Truck. You can meet at 2242 Third Street to purchase your $15 tickets for the tour. I also did put flyers up over there on the table over Holly and Sandy with more information and the addresses of where this is going to be held. Last but not least, the Laverne Historical Society is once again selling its homemade jelly. We have pomegranate apple and cinnamon apple jelly for sale as well as pomegranate syrup. Come check Sherri Best for your order and make your holiday table festive with these delicious treats. On January, come January, the new year, we'll be adding the lemon and orange marbelé to the list of homemade items. Satisfy your sweet. Satisfy your sweet tooth and support those community organizations.
Thank you, Yvonne. Appreciate that.
Pick up flyers, like I said, they're over there at the tables for the upcoming events of the couple months in the Historical Society.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bocham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Laverne residents. I wanted to remind the Laverne residents that Wednesday, November 16, at the Sheraton Fairplex, which is located at 601 West McKinley Avenue on the northwest corner of White Avenue and McKinley, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. will be the open house. They will have the committee members that are involved with the specific plan for the housing project that they plan on building at Fairplex property. The table topics include opening green space, fair, and historical preservation, transportation and connectivity, housing, and commercial spaces. And they encourage people to come, and it's going to be an open house style, so anytime between those hours, you can come and talk with them. They will answer questions, and they are going to have renderings of what they expect the project to look like. So I think that would be informative. They will also have some sort of, and I don't know how many they'll have, but, and it's also on the City of Pomona's website, the specifics to this plan. I know there's a lot of discussion on local Facebook group pages, as well as Nextdoor. So I know that there's many residents that are interested in this, so I just want to make sure that they are aware of the open house that they can attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bocham. I know I received a, something on, someone sent it over, but they have had a meeting already, and it's on video now, so you can see what the original, the first meeting was, or one of the first meetings, so kind of a precursor to the 16th next week, because a lot of people are concerned what's going there, how's it going to impact Laverne, you know, and so.
And I'm sorry, I forgot to thank Councilmember Lau. She was the one who forwarded me that email to make sure, so, thank you.
Anyone else for announcements?
My name is Lily Brenham, so I think the announcement should everybody know this because the voting day, election day will be tomorrow. And then I went to University of Laverne, the Voting Center, it's a very great place, very convenient, only take me five minutes to get my vote done, but unfortunately, just very few people. I, I hope everybody already vote, drop the ballot. I just hope not, not because the rain, okay? Rain or shine, please come. And tomorrow, last day, because I come from a country, we don't really have voting rights. I don't even know what's that. So it's very important. It doesn't matter who you're going to vote, who you're going to support, please go vote, especially as a parent, we really, in the last minute, in the rain, we still handing out flyers because we want to support some school member, we want to support, right? So we don't like to give a no's, and you get the chance to vote them out, right? So many reasons, just go vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Lily. All right, anyone else? We'll go to our online person.
This is Tom Cornese.
Hi, Tom.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can't hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Tom Cornese. I'm acting in charge at the Laverne Library, World Forests Way. And we're just, I'm wanting to cover some upcoming events for the, for this month. This Saturday, we'll be having an in-house event called the Blue Submarine, it's for families, and it is a lecture with, about the ocean and ocean creatures, and they are reviewing the live tidal pool, so the kids can actually come in and touch the animals that the company will be bringing for this presentation. On the 7th, and that's from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. And you can register online, if you go to laecranylibrary.org, and you go to our location of our library, and you click on that, and the registration button is right there. You don't need to register, but the priori will be given to those, we capacity to those who do. The same goes for teen program, we have the 17th, that's a Thursday, 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. It's a program we do quarterly, it's called Adult 101, it's to help teens progressing into adult. And this one will be on stress management. And again, they can register for that. Registrations don't open for programs until a week before, so they have to wait a couple days if they would like to attend that. And that's for teens, 13 through 18. And then lastly, we've had, we have another ongoing program for pre-K toddlers, 3 to, 2 to 5, excuse me, it's called Smart Camp Storytime. It's, it's a school readiness program with stories and singing and learning other concepts, color shapes. And that will be starting again, runs five weeks in a row, and then takes a few weeks off. That one starts December 2nd, from 11:30 to 12:00, and again, it's from ages 2 to 5, and they're character guarding. And that's it.
That's it? Announcements on the DAS here?
Yeah, I have one, save the date. For the Benita High School Choir Music, their Yule Tide Show is going to be on December 10th at the Benita Center for the Arts, the BCA. And on December 10th, there's going to have two shows. It's a Saturday, one's at 2:00 p.m. and one's at 7:00 p.m. Students and seniors are $10, and general admission is at, is $15. And tickets will be going on sale soon. So go out and celebrate with the kids singing.
Thank you, Mayor Procham Crosby. A couple items, as Lily had stated, there are, I think, five voting centers, one being at St. John's Episcopal, we have it at the Abrams Hall over on the university campus of University of Laverne. There is Holy Name of Mary, the San Nema's Community Center, can I just say one? I think it was four or five. And the drop-off boxes in front of City Hall, and also at Oak Mesa Elementary by the field in the preschool. So constitutional right to vote, need to vote. I don't care if it's raining or not, I appreciate what Lily said. You know what? We've had our ballots for weeks now, and there's no excuse to get out there and put that thing, sign it, do your thing. These people have been monitoring these ballot boxes like hawks. They are watching everything they do. I've been watching on, on a number of programs that they're actually videoing the people counting and stuff this time, so, I mean, it's like, they're doing a really good job watching over it, so I think it's important, but we need to get those, in order to vote, you have to vote, and you have to put it in the ballot box, all the way to a voting place, so please. We have Veterans Day this, this Friday at 11:00 a.m. at Veterans Hall. We'll be celebrating our veterans. If you can make it, it's really a really nice, nice tribute, so that's 11:00 a.m. And then we have, as we all know, the Apple Ball Page with our probation and wanting to build our little prisons up there, which our community stopped. They have two positions open on the probation department. So that, I, we're going to fly that on our city website. You have to be a Los Angeles County resident. One of the terms is till 2028, and one is till 2030. They're very involved, but there is a criteria as far as if you can or cannot serve, but we'll be posting that. So I think it's very important, if a resident has time, and they're so inclined, because it's, it's very involved, and all of us try to watch those, I know that Ms. Bocham has been a champion on that, as far as watching those, it's very involved. It's hard to watch, it's hard to listen, but it is important to keep an eye on our neighborhood and make sure that they're doing the things they need to, that we don't touch Apple Ball Page again for any change for an SYT facility, so. With that, we have a consent calendar. Do we have anything pulled up the consent calendar, Mr. Duff? Council, with that, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it, noting that I am recusing myself from item 6I.
With that, go please. Is there a problem? We got it off? We are good here. Calendar carries. With that, we have other matters. Okay, are you going to repeat that one, or you want me to repeat that one? It's Police Department adding and amending the Laverne Municipal Code pertaining to personal conduct and property maintenance ordinance number 1112. Captain Sam Gonzalez will be reporting on that, is that correct, sir?
That is correct.
Welcome.
Take it away, Sam.
I got a little high definition here. Look, good evening, Mayor, Air Force Staff, Councilmembers, staff. Looking back to August 1st, 2022, during the city council meeting, you may recall the department sought appropriations to utilize funding from the American Rescue Plan. During that timeframe, it was also recommended we seek additional measures to assist the department's hosting that focuses on maintaining the quality of life by adding and amending Laverne's existing ordinances. As such, we reviewed the current ordinances to see if we can strengthen them in the areas that seek that exact code. The proposed amendment seeks to address persons obstructing the public right of way, seeks to prohibit camping, erecting a tent, maintaining or occupying any tent, larger structure, or makeshift structure. Prohibits any person who lawyers or remains at any public park at any time between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. Public falling morning without, excuse me. The department also seeks to add Chapter 9.19 to the municipal code to address loitering after hours at public buildings by adding section 9.19.010. Department seeks to amend section 5 in section 9.40.030, which reclassifies nuances, nuances, excuse me, by adding section 9.40.030L, which addresses the unauthorized accumulation, storage, abandoned junk carts in any area of land within the same streets. And finally, adding section, adding Chapter 9.25, section 6, in section 9.25.010, seeks to add any conduct addressing public irritation and defecation. Each and proposed amendment before you have been reviewed by the city attorney, staff recommends the city council introduce and waive any further reading of the ordinance
Do we have any questions for Mr. Captain Sam Gonzalez? Let's leave public comment first, Mr. Johnson. We'll open up public comments for this. Anybody wish to speak on this matter? Ms. Bocham? Mr. Gonzalez, we'll be back, I'm sure we'll have some further questions for you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. More than comment, I have questions about this. Since Laverne PD participates in the LA Impact Program, they understand the connection between drug usage and homelessness, and so why weren't these additional funds that are allowing this allocation for code changes, why weren't those funds factored into the budget? I know it was explained that that LA Impact money is separate and is only to be utilized by that program, but there should be some kind of a bridge or connection between the two. I know that there was ARPA money specifically allocated for the host program, but we're talking about additional funds for that, and so those additional funds is what I'm referring to, that was not specifically allocated in the budget. The other questions I have is that, for example, he just was referring to the explanation about their, like their belongings, or their, like their cart, they have a shopping cart or some kind of a carry cart. Where is that stored, and at what cost? Does it go to a storage facility, a locker at the police department? Where are those belongings kept and for how long? Secondly, is there going to be a way to send some kind of video or photographs to the police department or the host program people that are out with, you know, meeting with these individuals? Because that may assist in their arrest if there's some kind of illegal drug usage or criminal activity. People should not approach these people, they are very dangerous. I have seen it firsthand. And so I think if people are at a Target or Kohl's and they see something, take a picture or video, and they can send it somewhere. So I would like to see some kind of technology implemented to allow this to be facilitated, because it's, you know, nobody wants to get involved with, okay, this is a witness, they have to go to court, they have to testify or give a deposition. If they were to submit that to the police department or the host program people, if they're other than law enforcement officers, that could be used for that purpose. The other thing is that many of them sleep on sidewalk areas adjacent to businesses. What is the city doing to help facilitate sanitizing those areas? I know that there are businesses, for example, the Bull House, which is adjacent to the alley parking way and on Third. You know, our businesses are still recovering from COVID. I hate, everybody hates that excuse, but that is a fact. Those businesses had to jump through so many hoops to stay in business, to have heaters, to have Plexiglas, to have disposable items. These people are still recovering. Why is it their fault that homeless people are allowed to urinate, defecate, leave used drug needles, condoms, whatever? I think that the city should help facilitate these businesses to clean that up, and if Public Works can go and use a pressure washer and sanitize this area, I mean, that's right across the street from the university. No one should have to, to deal with that and see that on their way to class or on their way to work. So I think these are important things that need to be considered and maybe coincide with some of the codes that are going on, but ultimately, it's, it's a budget issue, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bocham. Anyone else wish to speak on this? Please, if you could state your name and your address, if you could, please do.
My name is Bryce Dwyer, and I live at 2042 Fifth Street here in Laverne with my family. The city's Fall Recreation Brochure included a brief guide to homelessness resources. The frequently asked questions section of this guide stated, quote, homelessness is not a crime. People experiencing homelessness have the same rights as anyone else to be in public place. If this ordinance is adopted, the guide and the city's next recreation brochure will need to be updated because ordinance 1112 makes it a crime to be homeless. Nothing in the letter of this ordinance specifically mentions homelessness. However, its framing in tonight's agenda, as well as a report from the police department recommending it be adopted, make it clear that this ordinance specifically targets the unhoused members of our community. I understand that there are those who will support this ordinance because, not in spite of the fact that it targets the unhoused. I believe that communities can be judged by the way they treat those who struggle the most. With the passage of this ordinance, will struggling members of our community be treated with dignity and kindness, or will they be told that their circumstances make them a criminal? Engaging the host team and using funds for vouchers, outreach, mental health support, medical attention, et cetera, is to be commended. However, no reasonable definition of wraparound services includes citations, arrests, or time in jail. Ordinance 1112 makes it clear, the city of Laverne will offer modest support to the unhoused, but only accompanied by a clear discriminatory threat of punishment. All members of our community should ask themselves if we ought to make it a crime to suffer, a crime to struggle, or a crime to be poor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? We're going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it up for the DAS. Councilmembers, anyone wish to speak on this?
I do. I have a real concern. This code asks for individuals to have a permit to be in a park overnight, and as far as I'm aware, we don't have that permit available. We have overnight parking permits online. To what department would a person inquire for this overnight? You can't be in permit.
There you go. Got a green light.
We don't have any kind of permit, pro-
We don't have any kind of permit process for individuals that I'm aware of. I think the idea here is if there was a special event, which the city does have a process for, for example, scouting before they went out for a big overnight trip, they wanted to spend the night together in the park, something like that. You know, we could definitely have that had a permit. But to my knowledge, there's no individual walk-up or process to, I wanna spend the night in the park.
Anyone else?
I could also add to that.
Come on, Mr. Gonzalez, come on up. Captain Gonzalez, we've got, there's a couple of questions. I've got some of these, these are answers to these that Ms. Bochamp brought up. I know that we have a Conex that we purchased that the belongings will go into on a hold for as long as that individual is, whether 5150 hold or whether mental hold or whatever. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I have with me Sergeant Alvarado, who's sergeant in charge of the host program. He may also have the opportunity to speak at that. But if you give me an opportunity, I could address Mr. Johnson's concern. The ordinance here referred to with the park, we've had issues where homeless old stay or overstay in an area they may have been rented. For instance, the picnic areas that are covered, the shelters that are covered. For instance, if a family goes and rents that and we have an individual that's there without a permit, we may use this ordinance to say, sir, ma'am, you may have to leave because this location is rented. And they can't be there without having a permit in which the family who's rented the place or obtained a permit to rent the place has the right to be there. So that covers that part of the ordinance. And then to cover the second part, as far as the storage of equipment, I'd like to defer that to Sergeant Alvarado, who may be able to answer that question in detail. We are where the items that are taken from the public. We take a much more holistic approach in ensuring that they get their items back. And we keep everything in accordance with the law. Sergeant Alvarado, come in.
I think also we want to explain also the fact that we have this $300,000, which is about $100,000 a year of ARPA funds. This for 10 days a month for a two-team, is that correct? Two officer team? 10 days a month with tricydemy mental health, either a clinician or a mental health coordinator to help you guys with... Navigator, excuse me, navigator.
That is correct. This is a Part 19. And again, Sergeant Alvarado did a great job presenting it the last time. And he may also be able to speak on the successes we've had since August 1st, since our present, since the private presentation, so.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you. There is a lot to this. It is an evolving process. And my presentation in August, the way we lead things was compassion, understanding that people experiencing homelessness, it is not a crime. And we take a very holistic approach to that. So there's very, there's different levels to that. And initially, we leave a balance, wanting the resources, wanting the help. We have to also acknowledge the gravity of balance of offering resources and them accepting and also gaining compliance for our community. We still have rules and regulations that govern our city. So some of the things that were put in place to just help us, assist us, and are aligned with other communities around us to give us tools when needed. So that's why some of the ordinances, you see things such as the storage of property of stuff that's left. We do have a system in place for their property. And as I spoke about in August, people experiencing homelessness, their shopping cart or whatever they may have, it might be all they have. And we acknowledge that. And we don't want to anyway minimize their belongings or make them feel like they're criminals. So we do have a system in place to store their property. We try to deal with anything, you know, we try to take it and we try to make sure it's sealed and protected and put in a storage place, which we're working on getting our Conex box placed at City Arts. There will, in addition, there'll be a system in place for a timeframe in which they can get their property back. So that looks like something like 60 days, which again is in line with other communities around us and some of the other cities such as Bama that experience lawsuits. So we followed some of the orders that they've been given in regards to timeframe. So we do have plenty of systems in place. This Conex box is gonna be, I had it customized so we can keep people's stuff safe, we can keep it secure. And there's gonna be a system in place as well for them to have notification so they can get their property back. We don't just throw away, we don't just, you know, we take pride in what we do in our community. And our team is really making great strides. Not to get off the topic, but just for example, in the last two months, we've had over 160 hours of officers working extra. That's on top of what we already do on our regular job. This is a cold hour of duty, we're working overtime to do. In those 160 hours, we've had close to 70 contacts. About half of those contacts are from some type of intervention, whether it's people being housed, whether it's people being, getting resources such as a phone and a driver's license, which kind of leads to the next things about getting, you know, social services or different types of housing that you can't have without an ID or a phone, so.
Can you expand, Elecata, a bit on their services? Elecata? They've been helping, I understand, talking to the chief, that they've been quite helpful with just that particularly because you can't go anywhere without an ID of any kind. You may not get a license, but you get an ID. Can you explain?
Right, so Elecata is in our city every Thursday. They're usually like 8 to 5. They could flex their hours if they needed, if needed. But what they do is they offer different resources. And one of them is that they have their own transportation. So if someone needs just a driver's license, we don't have to remove the team or the team members to go driving down there, which we absolutely will and we have. But Elecata is able to drive them down there and get their ID. They give them vouchers. And then boom, they'll take them right to the next spot and give them a cell phone. And they've done this numerous times. So we work with our partners, Elecata and Tri-City, and we lean on each other to make a difference. And we've seen, like I said, a huge increase of people getting assistance in our city. And yes, sometimes it does affect enforcement. Sometimes there is arrests. Sometimes there are 5150s. But again, it's a part of the balance of outreach and compliance in our community.
Well, I just want to say that, I mean, I understand the gentleman that was speaking, but I've seen this in action. And I think the most important thing is Ms. Bochamp has stated that information as much as you can. She brought up a very good point. I have taken pictures and sent them to the police department. I think it's important. They have their website, also a little video. But I must warn our residents that some of these people, because of their mental stability, they get very upset and they get combative. And you have to be very, very careful when you do that. And it's a delicate issue, so, I mean, I can't stress it. I mean, I was a cut, I was told I wasn't the mayor, so I was like, whatever. She knew the mayor. And I was like, I am the mayor. No, you're not. I know the mayor. It's like, okay, I said, have a nice day. He sent the information and, you know, so.
And we don't like our citizens to engage in stuff like that just because it puts them in a bad spot. So just imagine if you're going through something and someone's filming you. Like, it can be very agitating.
Be delicate about it.
Yeah, and we don't want to like trigger people. So we absolutely can call us, of course, there's a business line unless it's emergency 911. We also have our watch commander. You can email the watch commander. So if you did happen to have a video from far from your car or something, you can email the watch commander. That would go to the watch commander directly and then he would be able to, or he or she would know to disseminate that information to either the host team or the patrol officers. So there are some avenues. But we could be better, of course.
Well, I think we do a very good job. And I think the most important thing is to remember that most of these people we deal with are mentally incapable. And we've seen them, we've all seen them in our neighborhood. And it's important to give this some delicate touch and try to get them the services. The problem is, is a lot of them don't accept the services. And until there's an issue and we have to protect our residents because they may become combative, which they have, and then they can put them on a hold or get them some services. But our governor, in his great wisdom, did not select Los Angeles County for the CARE Act. So we have to wait till 2024 before that even gets enacted, which is, which will be able to give our police department, our city, more teeth to be able to take care of these people, to get them in a mental institution, which they don't even have, or services, which they don't even have right now, and they're trying to figure that out. So these other counties, he split it, five or 10 other counties, got the services, so. Anyway, sorry, just, I'm very, this is a hot issue with me because one homeless person in Laverne is too many, period. And it really affects our police department because it's dangerous. And it's dangerous for you, it's dangerous for the residents. And we're doing our best with our ARPA funds and what you guys are doing. We're all doing a very good job. It's just that our hands are tied. We can only do so much. And if they choose not to have services, we can only push them. They have to leave that area they're in. And that's why these ordinances are so important to put teeth in right now, so.
You're absolutely right. Thank you, Mayor. And I think the last topic that was brought up here was the maintenance of the streets and sidewalks. And as you pointed out, we are working with partners to clean that up. In the presentation that Sergeant Alvarado presented, we also have a contract with the cleanup service, depending on what it is. If it's on private property, we leave that to the actual property owner to pressure wash it. But if it is on city streets, our own city crew can clean it up. So it really depends on the circumstance, on how that's addressed. But like you mentioned, we do...
We do have that in place.
Yeah, we do have, yes, we do have that in place. But we are doing our best with the resources we have, with the time.
But it's very important for our residents to, if they see something. And I'm kind of the guy that drives around on the weekends. You have to look closely, but there are people that are hidden. And it's not acceptable, you know, in these areas that they're sleeping in and the situation they're in. And call it out. Call the police department, please. Be very careful filming and videotaping, you know, be very cautious.
And you're sure to utilize the watch commander email, if you'd like to use that, or contact the watch commander by telephone through an unauthorized security line.
Maybe we could put a blast on that, Chief, again, to make sure that people have that capability and they know how to do that. We could, please, very important.
We got Holly right there.
The boss.
We got Holly right there.
We got the boss. Do you have any questions for Captain Gonzalez?
Yeah, you got, I just, I know you started, mentioned how many hours you guys have. I know 160 hours, I do recommend the hard work that you guys have been working. I've seen it in action, in the resources, everything, but it's... How many contacts have you had in the past and where you're at today? Do you guys have any numbers on that?
So I could speak more in proximities, but we're in approaching the 70 as far as contacts. And of those 70, I would say half have had some type of intervention. And again, that's either, you know, that's getting housed. We've housed half a dozen. We've had some 5150s and we're getting them in care. We actually have them in those places on 5150 and now they're on 5250, which means an extended 14 days without the 5150, which is several hours. So that person's getting in care. And what we do from there is we notify agencies such as Tri-City, and they intervene once that person is able and obtain the resources. These are in extreme situations, but those are the ones that take a lot of time in calls for service. To give you an idea of what each deployment looks like, we are averaging six to 12 calls for service that our team has taken from patrol. So that's alleviating our patrol officers from...
A week a day?
Every time we deploy.
Okay, which is...
Yeah. We're looking at, it could be, it could be some weeks, it could be twice a week. It just depends on schedules. Sometimes it's once a week, sometimes it's three times a week. So it just depends. But statistically, like, we've done really well in a short amount of time with the resources we got.
What is your interaction compared to, let's say, a mentally ill individual? And then just an individual that's down on their luck and they got in a situation where they're in a car or they need vouchers? What's your percentage, just roughly? As far as how many people that we're dealing with that have a mental disability or that have a drug situation, as compared to the people that we're dealing with that usually have a problem, that they became homeless and they're, you know, just in a bad situation that we get service? What is your...
It would, to be honest, Mayor, it'd be hard to give like an actual estimation on what that would look like. We've seen all walks of life that are experiencing homelessness. You know, we've seen an increase of mental health. People experiencing homelessness at some level in mental health or some type of substance abuse, or just people that are having a misfortune in their life. But again, we try to tailor our interaction with that person on their experience and help navigate whatever we need to do to get them in a place where they can start, you know, getting them a PD here.
I just want to thank Chief Flores for your leadership because allowing Captain Gonzalez and Sergeant Alvarado and your host team to be able to research this and bring this ordinance to our city. And again, this ordinance, it helps out all of our residents in our city, where it can give you the ability to help people, but also it gives the ability, if people are not helping themselves or following through, for you to help them out as well. And it's very delicate. And you, as the host team, what I have witnessed, that that's how you act. You don't go in shahar, you don't go in first visit and says, oh, not our city, get out and be somewhere else. You try to give them support. So really appreciate what your team does out there and having more hours and more people out there to really make contacts. Because when I'm out visiting residents in the city, that's one of the first topics that come up is how do we help out the homeless? Or what do we do about the homeless? And the first thing I do say is, it's not a crime to be homeless. But we want to make sure that if they're in the parks and that in the next day or the night, that everyone's safe in our city as well, including them. So we want to make sure to help out. And this ordinance really helps that out. So thank you for your leadership and thank you guys for all that you do for every resident.
These funds are getting real tough here, I'm getting real weak. But I wanted to echo those sentiments, you know, thank you to Chief Flores, thank you Captain Gonzalez and Sergeant Alvarado. I just want to say that, you know, I think, Jay, you hit the nail on the head. This is a delicate balance between being compassionate and compliance. And I know how hard you work and I know how hard the team works. I sit on the Tri-City Mental Health Board on behalf of the city. And that has been, you know, really illuminating in terms of what's out there. So I think it's really important. I really appreciate you, Senator Alvarado, for bringing up and enlightening folks to say that this is not just about whether you're mentally ill. These are people that may be victims of domestic violence and have been left to live in their cars. These are people who have, you know, gone down on their luck and need an opportunity and a hand up. So I appreciate the work that you're doing. And I appreciate that this is a very different tactic that may have been employed 10, 20, you know, 30 years ago, which was basically, let's just go ship them to another city. We'll just dump them off somewhere else, you know, and not looking and recognizing them as human beings. So I just want to again say thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Alvarado. Councilwoman Johnson?
I appreciate everything the police department has done here and everything that you're doing for the community. I have a problem, though, with the way the ordinance is written, saying an individual needs a permit, that they're un, it's unattainable. And I just don't agree with that. It's a misdemeanor, we're classifying it as a misdemeanor, which is, at least in my mind, that goes on your record. And it makes it more difficult for that person to get a job. But it's in here numerous times that without possessing a valid city permit is guilty of a misdemeanor. But there is no way to get that permit that I'm aware of.
Chief?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. You guys did excellent and they are doing great. Thank you guys for all your kind words. Just real quick before I just, I don't want to forget our great relationship with our, oh, sorry, Yvonne Duran, our...
Community Services.
Community Services Manager. She's been key in working with the navigators for us and helping us with this all the way through. So her help with Tri-City and us building this program is huge, so thank you, Yvonne, for that. I did want to address, you have some legitimate concerns. You know, if you look at what's going on in the city of Los Angeles, right? And there's a lot of things going on, it's creeping out this way, too. Remember, at the end of the day, we have discretion. It doesn't mean every person that is setting a tent in a camp is going to be hit with a misdemeanor ticket. So that's when we bring in our excellent experts, our subject matter experts, and start again with LACADA, with Tri-City, with mental health, with anything we can to connect them to services. So we can even give them vouchers for a few months, right? So the idea is enforcement is our last option, but it's an option if we need it. So if, for example, a community nearby cleared out a riverbed and they all decided to take a camp in one of our parks, we would do everything we can to connect them to services, get Tri-City involved and all the navigators. And then if they refuse to leave our parks at night, we might have to enforce it with a misdemeanor. But it's the discretion that we have, if that helps at all. Maybe not. And when we presented this in August, August 1st, the calls for service that we were getting to our dispatch center, which is from anyone in the community, anyone driving through the community, we were averaging 70 to 90 calls a month in August, sorry, June, July, August. And from August 1st to currently, we're getting 200 calls a month on the homeless. Some of them multiple on the same person and some of them, as they move to different locations, more people are calling. So I appreciate everybody's confidence and your recognition of our team that's putting a lot of effort into this. The balance is huge and while also keeping in mind the liability of the city about what we're trying to do. So thank you. If you have any other questions, we're all here.
Are we having that issue within public parks? I know that there are neighborhoods with green belts that that tends to be a place that homeless want to hide or in business complexes. But is it, has it become an issue in our parks that people are camping?
Oh, camping, not necessarily. But again, as other agencies get stronger ordinances, they're going to go to the cities that don't have them. So for example, we didn't have a trespass waiver that we gave to businesses. And those businesses that were closed at night, the homeless would come and stay there overnight, sleep in their front door or the back door. And then they, of course, when people are coming in to work in the morning, they go on the homeless there. So by us taking the time and creating this giant book, we went to every business in town and said, would you like to sign this waiver for trespass? And that gives us permission to remove anybody that's sleeping on their property at night or maybe blocking the doorway. And then we would help try to connect them to services, but clear them. The reason I share that with you is those that didn't have the trespass waiver forms, that's where the homeless went to, their businesses, until we educated some more. So we may never need to adopt those ordinance. I mean, sorry, we may never need to enforce those ordinance. But if we don't have it, it's less enforcement we can take when our priority is engagement.
So does this misdemeanor language need to be in the ordinance for you to be able to have some effect?
It is all of our ordinances unless I'm mistaken on misdemeanors for the municipal code. That's just the standard.
Can I, can I just ask? I just want to, just real quick, maybe I want to make sure I'm understanding what your concern is correctly, so that maybe we can bypass that. I think you're looking at the portion that says, any person who loiterers or grains in any public park, blah, 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 without possessing a valid city permit is guilty of misdemeanor. So your concern is, we don't even have a permit for someone.
It's not available to get.
Correct. So that, I think that's where his distinction is. And so I think, the way I'm reading it, and again, I'll let other legal minds wordsmith as necessary, but the way I'm reading it and my understanding is like, for instance, if it was a group, right? They could obtain potentially a city permit to have a camping event at the park. If that group of people did not have the permit, they would all be potentially guilty of violating this ordinance. And no single person would be. But you're saying, because there's no, even, there's not even an option for a single person to obtain that permit, why is it worded that way?
Yeah.
Did I just, did I just clear that up and out? So that's how, and you would like to see that reworded? Because I think it just, to me, I don't, I don't know that it makes the, I see what you're saying. So I don't know, Mr. Kras, if there's a workaround or a wordsmithing of that.
Well, if you don't like the phrase about, you know, without a valid city permit, you can just strike it. And then no one is allowed to be in the park between 10 and 7.
And is 10 o'clock too early for some of our events at city parks?
But our events at City Park are not camping. We have a lot of events that are not.
And they have a permit to get in there.
Has this been fashioned after other ordinances in other communities?
It has.
And it's pretty much the same language?
Yes, and then approved by the city attorney.
And I had the same issue with Councilwoman Johnson. I just, I don't have something that's not for all. But yet, if this is something we need to do in order to give this more latitude and to take care of the situation, I'm okay with it. I mean, we can change it, but then if we do that, then no one can. It's like, well, that's not what we're trying to do here. But I do understand, and I had the same situation, but I think you've spent some time on this and we've already put it in there. And we're comfortable with it, our attorneys, is that correct?
Can I, can I ask a further question then? So in Section 4, under lawyer and after hours at public buildings, it is phrased to state that while not attending a scheduled or permitted event, if we changed Section 3 to similarly say, without attending or participating in a scheduled or permitted event. So it's not an individual that would get an imaginary permit that doesn't exist, but it would be if you were not at an event that is otherwise permitted.
Right. But then would it just take out the permit?
Totally.
Totally, right. And I'm okay with closing those parks from 11 o'clock to 7 a.m., whatever it is, whatever that may entail. I just don't like the idea of saying, you don't have a permit, but there's no way to obtain that permit.
So basically, you're just taking it out for anybody? It would just be scratched permit?
Right.
No one's allowed in the park after 10 o'clock?
Yes, I agree.
Yeah. Definitely, that's fine. Common sense, right? Common sense.
Okay, so what would that do to us right now? Can we make that amendment or does that have to come back?
No.
Atlanta has some strange.
The motion you're looking for is to introduce and wavering and full Ordinance 1112 with the change to Section 3 by deleting the phrase, "without possessing a valid city permit."
And that, that would apply everywhere that it's listed.
So it's not just Section 3?
Right.
It would not be everywhere, but then.
Yeah, it'd be a Section 3 and 4.
But it would not be in 1, because that allows for any lawful labor activities permitted to be carried out at the state, activities for which a permit has been previously obtained, blah, 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 blah.
And then 2, yeah, that's not, make sure that's.
So it would be 3 and 4. 3 and 4.
Or rewriting it.
Okay, so you would scratch it in 3 and 4, correct?
All they have to do is say.
I don't know, it's either, as long as it doesn't fire, at least the department's in charge, we just scratch it.
Well, that's literally my last comment, is I cannot thank all of you enough for all of the support. Our officers were drowning in these calls and unable to give them the time that they need and the art of funding and the ability for them to do what they're great at, is put this together with Yvonne. We're making good headway. We have a long way to go in preparation for our goldmine, as you guys know, we've talked about that. But thank you, thank you, thank you for the support. It's a lot, and it is very delicate. So we appreciate your patience and I appreciate all of the community's patience. Because as you said, there's a lot of mindset of one is too many. And we're working on it, one at a time.
Well, and I want to be clear, too, that it's not only our Chief of Police, our Captain Sam Gonzalez, Sergeant Jay Alvarado, Community Services Director Yvonne Duran. It's also our Tri-City Mental Health, it's also LACADA, I don't know how you say that, LACADA, LACADA, whatever you want to call it. All these support services, we couldn't do without it. And finally, they're focusing on the reality of the situation is that we need to help and service these people, get them off the streets. Agreed, so. Thank you, Chief, I appreciate that. Any further questions for Captain or Sergeant Alvarado or the Chief? And we will go ahead and then we would actually have to make, we have to make a motion.
Let's set changes.
Let's set changes. Anybody would like to make a motion?
I would be happy to make their motion by striking out. Base or the clause, "without possessing a valid city permit," is guilty of misdemeanor. 3 and 4.
Second?
I second.
Go please.
Before we said, you said striking out is guilty of misdemeanor. I think the part that was, it's supposed to be struck out, was without possessing a city, a valid city permit.
Permit, that's right.
That is guilty of a misdemeanor, still standing.
It has to stand, yes. It's just without a valid permit. Okay, sorry.
The motion is to reduce the ordinance and wavering and full with the those two clauses.
And catch your second then?
Second, we got a second. We vote please?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, I do appreciate it. Thank you. Public comments. Item 8, public comments, is there a wish to have a public comment right now? Please, Gary, come on up.
Is this the last time I'm gonna bring up that house on B Street? I was over there looking the other day, if that front house catches on fire, that back house people back there, it's true, because there's no way to come out. I was hoping the fire marshal could stay here and bring him out. That's all I got.
Mr. Goff, we'll let him know, thank you.
Yeah, the other one is Halloween. It's really great over in Old Town Laverne, from Vinita and D Street on down. Is there a way you can shut down Vinita Halloween? Because there's a lot of kids shooting across that street there. So it might be something to remember safety issues and somebody getting hit down there because it's really, really busy.
Thank you.
That's it, I'm shutting up.
I will say, Gary, that we had, one of our friends, actually lives across from Mr. Johnson, 900 pieces of candy. So we're talking thousands of kids. Been a concern of mine, too, so we'll have to look into that. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Lily.
My name's Lily. Thanks to the mayor and council, just about the homeless, the park kids camping in this park. I just really appreciate we really have the decision to keep the same because I think it's very common sense. And then I really worry about that because it's kind of like a very rare, I have kids around, right? I have park big top behind me in front of my house. It's kind of ridiculous, it has some stranger camping after 9, 10 o'clock. So I appreciate we vote for that because it's very big concern. Because I heard about so many, like the attack by homeless. I think they maybe have a mental problem. But of course, some number is because of release from jail and then soft to crimes. That's a big problem in California. So definitely some news, attack, especially Asian get attacked, some news. Not because of Asian, because the crime, the type of people, it doesn't really about race. It's because maybe, maybe Asian carry some belongings, it's more expensive. Okay, that's what I think. So I'm so appreciate, so appreciate the position, just want to say, thank you. So Old Town Laverne's great place for candy. We love that place for, I didn't know so much because it's not close to the center, but we have happy Halloween.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online?
We had one request for a call earlier, but he, he actually spoke under the actual item, so.
Okay. Then we will close public comment and move to the dearest. Councilmember Lau.
Okay. There was a YFAC, Youth and Family Action Committee meeting last week, I think it was, my days are all blurred. But I wanted to say thank you to our officers and our SRO who were present at that meeting to give a presentation on the dangers of fentanyl. And I think, you know, the work that you're doing in that realm to educate not only the kids but parents and the community about the dangers of the drug is really important. And as I shared earlier, we are looking to try to collaborate with the University of Laverne's Film Department to see if maybe we can film some of that so that we can disseminate it to a broader audience than just folks who can come to an in-person, you know, meeting and whatnot. So again, I just want to say thank you for that. If you have any questions about fentanyl, your parents, or if you have kids in your life, I think the expert, raise your hand, those guys, he's hiding. He's the only one that doesn't have the fur happening. But you can ask and he is happy to help out. We also had a CASI meeting, gosh, last week, too. And it was a really good discussion, I saw a lot of people from the community. It was nice to be in person. So really good discussion from a lot of different viewpoints. So I appreciate those that made it out to that meeting as well. And we'll have more information coming on the next meetings. Also wanted to say a congratulations and happy retirement to our Battalion Chief Greenway as he is now getting to go do other things rather than work, which sounds really nice to me. One other thing I wanted to mention, although Ms. Bochamp already mentioned it, about the Fairplex specific plan. For those that can't make it potentially to that open house, there is an email address that you can email your questions to, and that's specificplan@fairplex.com. So you should get a response from that email if you can't make it for whatever reason. Speaking about mental health, our next Tri-City Mental Health meeting is November 16th, which is the following Wednesday, at 5:00 p.m. It is via Zoom. I really encourage you, if you are interested in finding out what we are doing in this community and in our neighboring communities, to help those around us. Great, great organization, doing some really amazing things and really doing a lot to educate folks. And last but not least, I do have candy up here because I was overzealous with my candy purchasing. So please, I did, please take candy. So, and then actually, last, last. It is Movember, so if you are wondering by any chance why our lovely officers and staff may be growing hair in places that they did not previously, Movember were trying, they are doing so to bring awareness to men's health. And it started off initially for prostate cancer and testicular cancer, but it's since expanded to suicide prevention, mental health issues as well. So if you see a mo around, you know, please ask them how you can help to donate to a good cause or how you can help participate as well. So as always, be kind, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lau, Councilwoman Johnson.
We had an interesting youth sports meeting, held on the World Series night. Unfortunately, we had a lack of warm for some reason.
Very big lack of warm.
Yeah, and Halloween was a very busy time on Third Street. I think we went through close to $100 worth of candy. Wonderful times. I really enjoy being a resident of Laverne. Thank you.
Councilman Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. Great opportunity for me to be down in downtown Laverne on Halloween night. It was a great time, I enjoyed seeing you and seeing folks down there. Good to see the kids and the families there. Thank you to their city staff that made it really memorable for a lot of kids. The police department, the fire department, community service department, thank you very much. I had a great opportunity walking around there. And that was a great opportunity for me, just to see how wonderful this city is and how we can continue to make it better. That is my dream and I will continue to push forward that. I attended Hillcrest Homes earlier and it was for the grand reopening of their dining hall. Saw the mayor there and the folks there, I appreciate the opportunity, being able to, my seniors, which I love greatly. And also attended the entire senior volunteer patrol, the appreciation event. Thank you, Chief, Captain Gonzalez, amazing barbecue. Thank you, Chief, Captain Gonzalez, amazing barbecue skills. Amazing barbecue skills. Our retired senior volunteer patrol donated thousands of hours, thousands of hours out there for visibility and for that I'm grateful. Furthermore, Laverne-St. Davis Pop Warner, about today, they won the Fortune U Mount Baldy Championship. This Saturday at St. Davis High School, for anybody who's interested in attending, they will have their regional semifinals. So good luck to them. And the cheerleaders for the Laverne-St. Davis Pop Warner, they're going to the National Cheerleading Competition in Las Vegas in January as they just won the region along with Fortune U. So congratulations to them. Another good congratulations, also Damien High School Waterfall Team semifinal to this guy semifinals. And so that was, so I attended a couple of those games and it's amazing how hard they work and, and it's just a great opportunity. I wanted to share, I got a beautiful card. Just something really in there, dear my heart, as we approach Veterans Day. And I wanted to share that with everybody here today. And it says, thanking God for your service to our country. Lord, for those who make a difference, who live their faith in hard places, who sacrifice for others so that freedom's light can shine brightly, we give you thanks. To the veterans, those that have served, those still serving, you are honored and appreciated for that part you've played in helping make the world a better place every day. These are both for the veterans, thank you. I got this card, so I really wanted to share that for all the veterans as we come, this November 11th for Veterans Day. So that's all I have and stay army strong.
Thank you, Councilor Cash. Mayor Plutim Crosby.
Yes, I had the pleasure to visit the Vintage Grove Apartments and meet with some of our residents and answer some of their concerns and let them know what's happening with the city. It's always my pleasure going out and visiting them, so thanks for that. Tomorrow, make sure, get your ballot in, one way or another. Put it in the ballot box or go and vote individually as well. Councilmember Cash, thank you for serving. Veterans Day is this Friday and the event at Veterans Hall, as has been said numerous times, the event starts at 11:00. Be there a little early. It's a lot, and it's tremendous. I've been there every year and I always bring my two favorite veterans, my father and my father-in-law, along with, with me to that event. I want to thank the staff. This, this meeting tonight had some meaty stuff in it, in the consent calendar. And just want to appreciate the finance department for really clarifying and answering all of our questions. You might not hear always our questions up here because we go through the agenda and we ask the staff all about it and we get answers back right away. So really appreciate that from all of our staff. I, I had to miss the YFAC meeting and I heard it was the best meeting. Fentanyl is a scary, scary, scary thing happening, especially to our youth. It's heartbreaking what's happening and what's being put in things and our kids are, are taking that because their friends have it. And we need to be very, very careful and really talk to each of our kids about know what they're taking and don't just take anything anymore because there's people out there putting in very dangerous drugs. And it's, we're, we're losing kids because of that. And then our, I've said it tonight, all night, I just want to thank LDPD. On Halloween, you gave a 16-year-old girl her Happy Day. She, my daughter dressed up in a costume. That was a video game and the police really helped make her picture for her. And just, and just playing out there with our kids and being out there for them. The officers didn't know it was my kid and, but just shows what they do for all of our residents and the great things out there. So really appreciate you guys. And it was a Laverne PD night. I think we got you some good equipment tonight too, to help out and make sure that you are helping out all of our residents for, for a long time being. So that's, really appreciate what you guys are doing.
Thank you, Mo. Wow, you've all covered just about everything. I want to say that on Halloween Day, the downtown business district, along with the fire, police, the senior reserves, you guys did, community service department with the coloring, you know, contest. There's no place like Laverne, like Councilmember Johnson stated. We really appreciate that. Everybody gets into it. The kids were having a ball between the fire trucks, the police cars, the police officers, community services. They're all dressed up as Harry Potter, which was really cool. And then every one of our businesses was passing out, they were passing out candy. And I saw some of the crazy, I haven't posted, I didn't like, I don't like posting stuff during it because it's like, let's just enjoy ourselves. But I, the one guy with the green tutu, with the, with tinker belt. And I called him, I said, I am so proud to be a man today. So he was, he was cracking up. But anyway, you guys did a fantastic job. I want to say that Veterans Day is coming. Thank you to those who have served. Thank you for those who are serving and thank you to those that gave the ultimate sacrifices of their lives for this wonderful country we live in. And we should, if you can make it, it's a wonderful, wonderful occasion there. Let's see. Also, Kevin Greenway, 20 years, 20 years in the fire department, was over at Mount Meadows. They had a luncheon for him and a celebration. So it was really nice, a really nice celebration. A lot of people were there, family friends, a lot of his cohorts in crime. So that was a very nice day, very nice day. And also, oh my goodness. Tomorrow is Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day, Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. The protection of California's communities is dependent not only on the individuals who devote their time and energy to the duties of law enforcement service, but also on members of the support staff, such as law enforcement records and support personnel, who devote countless hours to performing the duties to keep law enforcement agencies running smoothly. Law enforcement records and support personnel in California play a crucial role in helping law enforcement agencies identify, pursue, capture, and process suspected lawbreakers. And they continually share their invaluable expertise and experience to assist in tracking felons, maintain criminal statistics, and improve apprehension strategies. As such, the Laverne City Council would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge and commend our Laverne Police Records and Support Personnel for their unwavering commitment to the community and their invaluable contributions to California's law enforcement system. Agencies across the state have declared this Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day. Thank you all for serving, I do appreciate that. And one other thing, I do want to thank our staff. Chris Deen, there's, there's at least 10 items here that were major items of purchase that we need to make sure that our employees have the right tools and equipment. The Bearcat, the 10 vehicles, our pool filters, our heaters, just the stuff you don't think about that, that requires us to function as a city to keep our stuff in good shape, so. And I did, Officer Winrad was up in my neighborhood and I looked at the, I looked at the car and I said, oh my God, we can't give these cars to them. Those poor things. And they're not that old, they're not that old. He's throwing me stuff. But anyway, I want to thank all of our staff because it takes everyone in the city and these, these demands. It takes a great finance department to put all this stuff together to make sure we're doing it right. And unfortunately, even though that the cost did go up, what hasn't gone out? If anybody hasn't had anything done to their house or bought a car, it's incredible the cost that's gone out, so. But thank you, staff. You guys did a great job and hopefully we'll have some, we already have a couple. We have a Chevy Tahoe, we have a couple Explorers and a Dodge. I think we have for the fire department, police department, and then two police, not that we're counting. With that, we have a closed session, is that correct, Mr. Duff?
Yes, we did.
We will be not reporting out, is that correct?
That's correct.
Then we will recess in a closed session, not reporting out. Our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, November 21st, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. Thank you all for coming. We are recessed at 8:10 p.m.
How are you doing?
How are you?
Thank you.
See you soon. How are you?
I know, I know.